All right, it's five o'clock, calling this meeting to order. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. The open session part of this meeting will begin around 7:00 PM. Before going into closed session, the board is available for public comment on closed session agenda items. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on closed session agenda items?
There is no public comment.
Seeing none, the board will now adjourn into closed session. We're going to reconvene our meeting in open session. It is 7:13. Good evening, my name is David T. Gracia, and this is the Napa Valley Unified School District Board of Education. The NVUSD Board of Education is holding a regular board meeting tonight, and we invite participation either remotely or in person. Directions on how to participate via Zoom are available at nvusd.org/board. Interpretation in Spanish is available for tonight's virtual board meeting. Our interpreters are Arturo Garcia and Francisco Mesa. One of the interpreters will now translate the directions on our English channel, so our Spanish-speaking families may hear the instructions. The interpreter. Make the announcement.
Sorry about that. Yes, I'm sorry. Así buenas tardes, buenas noches. Vamos a comenzar nuestra reunión esta tarde. Va a haber interpretación al español. Abajo en su pantalla, en momento, van a poder escoger su idioma. Donde dice, eh, interpretación de idioma, vayan y selecciónen español. Si se unen a esta reunión por medio de un teléfono celular o tabletas, van a ver tres puntitos ahí escojan donde dice, eh, interpretación de idiomas, español. Y hagan clic ahí, por favor. Thank you.
All right. Can we please start with an attendance roll call from Julie Pressy, Executive Assistant?
Yes. Student Board Member Gomez.
Present.
Trustee Jankowicz is absent tonight. Trustee Gracia.
Present.
Trustee Water.
Present.
Trustee Riser.
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Present.
Trustee Chu.
Present.
Quorum present.
Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight for our Napa Valley Unified School District Board meeting. Item E1, Trustee Water, do we have a report on closed session items?
Yes, we do. D1, student discipline. D1A expulsion, number of cases, two. D1A1, the board recommends for the expulsion of student
Move to expel.
Second.
Ms. Pressy, may I get a roll call vote?
Yes. Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Thank you.
And D1A2, the board recommends for the expulsion for student
Move to approve. Second.
All right, motion by trustee two, seconded by trustee Riser, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, and the next item is D1B, read, readmitted expulsions to cases. D1B1, the board recommends for the readmitted expulsion for student
Move to approve. Second.
First by trustee two, second by trustee Riser, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Thank you.
And. And D1B2, the board recommends for the readmitted expulsion for student
Move to approve. Second.
Motion by trustee two, second by trustee Riser. May we get a roll call vote, please?
Trustee, trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Trustee Water. We now move on to the flag salute. If you would please rise and join me in saying in quench of confidence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. E3, this meeting is live streamed and recorded via Zoom and will be archived on the district's YouTube channel. For a detailed review of any meeting agenda item, the archived video can be referenced on the district's webpage at nvusd.org. The process for public comment can also be found on the district's webpage. Item E4, approval of the agenda, I will move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I made the first, second by trustee two. Can we hear from the student board member?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Yes, just the agenda.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All right, now we'll move to the approval of the minutes. This will be the one that you want to stay from. Do I, can I get a motion to approve October 13th, 2020?
A move to approve.
I'll second.
All right, first by trustee two, second by trustee Gonzalez Morris. Student Board Member.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, abstention?
Abstain.
Perfect, motion passes. E6, recognition of visitors and employee organizations. Dr. Masetti, do we have any visitors in attendance?
We do, thank you Vice President Gracia. Tonight we have Ms. Leslie Walder, President of NAPS, who's here this evening online. We could please promote her to panelist and President Walder, if you'd like to address the board and the public this evening?
Hi, this is Leslie Walder, President of NAPS. Good evening, Board Member Gracia. Superintendent Masetti, members of the Board of Trustees, and Student Member Gomez. I'm pleased to be here via Zoom this evening. And as we look forward to the Thanksgiving break, I'm appreciative of Dr. Masetti's message to families that went out today. It's, it's a much appreciated and opportunity to, to connect with family. It's been a busy beginning at the school year. So, thank you, and I look forward to this evening's meeting.
Thank you for being here, Ms. Walder. That's the, the visitor that we have this evening.
Now we'll move on to recognition of Students of the Month. Napa Valley Independent Studies. Will Susan Wilson and Ray Lucero please present the Students of the Month for Independent Studies?
Hi, good evening. I'll be talking for full. Good evening, School Board, Dr. Masetti, NVEA, and our amazing community. I'm Susan Wilson, an Independent Studies teacher located on the American Canyon Campus. Thank you once again for this amazing opportunity to present to you two incredible Napa Valley Independent Studies students. Our first, our September Student of the Month, has shown tremendous growth since her enrollment, starting with NVIS in her eighth grade. Now we get to fast forward to her senior year and to, and to one that'll be graduating early. Leela Hermel is truly independent, self-driven, and has a clear focus on her future in the healthcare field. It is my pleasure to introduce to you our October Student of the Month, Leela Hermel.
Hello, my name is Leela Hermel. I'm a student at the NVIS in American Canyon on the Napa, or on the American Canyon campus. I would like to thank you all for here, for being here and listening to me. I'd like to thank the School Board, Dr. Masetti, and NVEA for allowing me the opportunity to represent myself today. I'd also like to thank my parents, along with Ms. Wilson, for providing me with a strong, solid support system. I had an appendectomy back in my middle school years, which took me out of school for a while. During that time, I, I acquired anxiety, depression, and migraines. I joined NVIS in late eighth grade year after hearing about the program from my friend. I have attended Napa Valley schools my entire life, and I have enjoyed them all. After high school, I planned to find a program such as a certified nursing assistant, medical assistant, or some sort of assisting program to get myself in the healthcare field. After high I enjoy volunteering with my mom and the animal shelter in Napa, California. Walking dogs. My biggest accomplishment will be graduating early. When I began the program, I was behind due to the days lost by my headaches. I can say with full confidence, I have overcome those headaches, and I am proud to see my growth, maturity, and open-mindedness throughout the program of Napa Valley Independent Studies. Thank you so much for the recognition and hearing this small part of my story.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Um. Our October Student of the Month, Alessandra Vivar Correl, has demonstrated a strong commitment to learning and has excelled in all of her classes. Her strong work ethic has allowed her to graduate early, and she just finished this last Tuesday. Her teacher, Mrs. Lucero, is very proud of her accomplishments, and we are all excited to see what her future holds for her. I'd like to introduce to you Alessandra.
Good evening, my name is Alessandra Vivar Correl. I would like to thank the Board of Education and the Napa Valley Education Foundation and my teachers at NVIS for presenting me this award. In addition, I would like to thank my parents, Laurentino Vivar and Wadalupe Correl, for supporting me through my education. I have gone to school in Napa since preschool, and all I have attended Head Start Brown's Valley, Harvest Middle School, Napa High, and Napa Valley Independent Studies. I transferred to NVIS in my junior year, which has led me to be an early grad and helped me manage my schedule. Through high school, I have enjoyed classes in social science, especially in government. The challenges that led me to NVIS was my mental health. NVIS improved my anxiety and the challenges I had to confront. NVIS enriched my high school experiences by becoming more independent and diligent in my education. I plan to attend Napa Valley Community College after high school. Some potential careers I am interested in are vet tech, radiology, beauty business, and nutritionist. I am most proud of my education, the amazing community NVIS has developed to support all students and reach my goals. Thank you again for recognizing me as Student of the Month.
Thank you. All right, I think we can now move on to Napa High's Student of the Month. Will Principal Ainsworth please present the Students of the Month for Napa High?
So, thank you, Dr. Masetti, President Gracia, and NVUSD Board of Trustees. It's a pleasure to head into Thanksgiving break on an evening like this to celebrate our kids. Tonight, we get to present two amazing representatives of not only Napa High, but of the Napa Valley Unified School District, as they're both products of it from, from a young age. First up, I believe we have Carlo Diani, who is a senior. I'm going to let him speak for himself and his accomplishments and dreams and desires and what's next in life. But I just would like to say, you will find, when you meet Carlo, he might be the most genuine, authentic human being you've ever come across. And it is a pleasure to introduce him to you. So Carlo, go ahead.
Good evening, esteemed Board Members. My name is Carlo Diani, and I would like to extend my gratitude to Dr. Masetti, the Board of Trustees, and all my teachers at Napa High for this distinguished recognition. I'd also like to recognize and thank my parents for their tenacious support in all aspects of my life, from academics to all the spontaneous ventures that I find myself impulsively pursuing. I can confidently say that my fire would have burned out a long time ago if it wasn't for my parents continuously fanning the fading embers of my energy, until I reignited with new vigor and pertinacity. Over the duration of my journey through this school district, starting at Brown's Valley Elementary, continuing to Harvest Middle School, and come, and now coming to a conclusion at Napa High, one motto has always guided my progress. If you don't know it, ask. I'm all too sensible, my shortcomings, to believe that I'm smarter than any other person. But even though I'm not among the brightest stars in the sky, I have managed to find academic success simply by creating a honest relationship with all my teachers. I guarantee that I'm, I'm among the first to be overwhelmed by new material in class, no matter how well I try and hide it. But despite feeling overwhelmed, I also make a point to ask questions during and after class to ensure that I don't allow a little confusion to keep me from continuing my learning. And while I can't thank my teachers enough for the positive influence that each and every one of them has had on me, I would like to recognize two of my most influential teachers. First, my fifth grade teacher, Mrs. Slachi, who taught me that a person's potential is not predetermined, and that all it takes to succeed is a willingness to learn. And I also like to recognize my high school math teacher, Mr. McPherson, who not only put up with more of my shenanigans than any other person should ever be forced to, but actually found a way to incorporate my chaos into his lessons. And not only did he make his class awesome, but he also cultivated a very open environment that was extremely conducive for learning. And as everyone can comfortably, as everyone was comfortable in asking questions and could get involved in class discussions. And with teachers like Mr. Mack and Mrs. Slachi, it's no surprise that my love for mathematics has only grown and diverged into an interest in both physics and engineering, which I hope to pursue beyond high school. And even though it's only November, I'm sure that I'm not the only senior who feels that graduation will be around the corner all too soon. And when I look back at my career at Napa High, I'm extremely proud of the impact I feel that I've had in the school community and vice versa. As a captain of both the football and swimming team, as a teammate, as a member of the orchestra, as a student, and as a friend, the people I have had the pleasure of getting to know over the last four years have each left an invaluable impression on my life, as I hope I've had on theirs. And to anyone that is traveling along the same track as myself and many others before me have traversed, I advise only one thing. Fake it until you make it. There will inevitably be a time in your life when you're facing adversity, and the important thing to remember is that you may not have control of the world around you, but you do have control of yourself. If you wake up and all you want to do is lay back down, force yourself to take that next step and get out of bed and fake a smile. If you continue to fake it every day, eventually you won't be faking it, and you'll wake up with a genuine smile on your face, excited for the day ahead of you. In closing, I would like to thank NVUSD for the privilege, opportunity to develop and progress as, not only as a scholar, but as a human being in a community of caring people who only want to inspire students to reach their full potential. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Carlo. And our next student of the month that is a privilege to present is Lizette Rios. Lizette is a spirit leader, a four-year spirit leader. She's a senior that's highly involved on campus. And to meet Lizette is to meet someone who is just a bright shining star, and you're immediately struck by her kindness that she treats everybody with. So with that, Lizette, go ahead and share your story.
Thank you, Dr. Ainsworth, and good evening, everyone. Before anything, I would like to thank my parents and family for their undeniable support through my academic career. Without them, I truly would not be here today. Secondly, I would like to thank the board for this amazing recognition and the opportunity to share my academic journey thus far and how I plan to continue this path in the future. I have attended three schools within this district, these being Napa Valley Language Academy from preschool through the sixth grade, Harvest Middle School for seventh and eighth, and my four years of high school have been spent at Napa High. These three schools have been vital in the development of my character, both academically and socially. And a lot of this is also in connection with the amazing teachers I've had at all three schools. I've had the opportunity to expand my academic interests and pinpoint how I want to spend my future through the inclusion of news articles in my English classes curriculum. I have always expressed interest in political science, and the career I hope to pursue is in political journalism. My goal is to attend a four-year university in California and major in communications with a minor in political science. I hope to use my bilingualism to bridge the knowledge gap around politics within Spanish-speaking communities. The classes that have most inspired me have by far been my English and Spanish classes. These classes that have most, I have grown to enjoy because of their lack of formality and structure, and it has allowed me to move away from the common, one-way-only forms of learning and taught me to be fluid in my expression. Along with my academics, dancing has been a large part of my high school career. I've been a part of the spirit leading program at Napa High for four years, have been recognized as a National Dance Alliance All-American Dancer twice, and have had the opportunity to be a captain for two of my four years on the team. My junior year, I was both dance and cheer captain, and this year I am continuing my leadership role as a gold team cheer captain. Along with this, I was also selected to be a dance department officer, meaning I get to work with lower-level dancers within the program by assisting in a jazz two class. Having the opportunity to cultivate my leadership skills outside of a classroom environment has taught me a lot about myself and my capacity to support a team with a common goal. Some of my community service opportunities included participating in the Alzheimer's Walk, attending the Boys and Girls Club and Veterans Home for the holidays, and volunteering at elementary schools. Another program I have been lucky to participate in is the International Spanish Academy, or ESA, program. Being able to attend a dual-immersion elementary school allowed me to expand my understanding of the language I was raised around and allowed me to create a deep understanding for my heritage. Throughout all three schools I have attended, I have fostered a deep care for the language and the classes I've been able to take because of it. Academics have always been valuable to me, but this connection, understanding surpasses anything I could have expected or imagined. Again, I would like to thank the board for this opportunity and everyone in my life who has made this honor possible for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I just want to say congratulations to all our Students of the Month. Thank you for joining us tonight. Indeed. All right, I think we can move then on to our next piece of business, which is comments on non-agenda items. Trustee Water, did we receive any public comment on non-agenda items via email?
No public comments on non-agenda items were submitted via email before 8:00 AM this morning.
Thank you, Trustee Water. I do have three comment cards, so we will start with people present in the boardroom for public comment. First is Norma Ortiz. Hold on just a second, the microphone is not turned on.
Hello, NVUSD Board of Education, Dr. Masetti and community. My name is Norma Ortiz, and I am a happy and proud student at Redwood Middle School. I appreciate all that academic supports from my teachers and all that I continue to learn. I wish all of a happy upcoming Thanksgiving holiday, and I invite those who want to attend our December strings concert, which will take place in December. And I look forward to it, and just thank you. That's all.
Thank you. All right, and my next card is from Norma Ortiz.
Hello, NVUSD Board of Education and community at large. My name is Norma Ortiz. I first want to start off by saying how proud I am about my daughter, an eighth grader at Redwood Middle School. She has done a great job in her first trimester and continues to have a 4.0. And of course, her great engagement and maturity at, and while she does, one of the reasons I am here today, among my passion, among also my passion in education. I appreciate all of those who continue to support us in this pathway, Mr. Harnick, teachers, and staff. It has been also a pleasure supporting with Measure A1, reaching out to bilingual Napa residents and engaging in meaningful conversations in this respect. On the other hand, I plan to attend the CAVE Monterey Regional Parent and Parental Educator Conference 2022, on December 6th. And thank you for this opportunity, and I look forward to reporting back in our upcoming meetings. I plan to attend the first NVUSD Newcomers Session on November 29th. And I want to also thank Mr. Harnick for all the support with our Redwood Middle School Friday ASL class. We will have our Thanksgiving potluck tomorrow. I also attended the Safety Summit on November 8th, which was very productive, and we had great participation. I also place requests that NVUSD continue to find innovative ways to prevent vaping and to provide measures within our school grounds in terms of education to our students. And not, and of course, um, both during school, school times, but also after school in partnership with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next comment is from Brandy Briggs.
Hello, good evening, I am Brandy Briggs. I have been a kindergarten teacher for the school district for 20 and I'm also 25 years. I'm also the mother of a sophomore at Napa High. And I am here, I was, I was going to read a passage, but as an educator and as a mom, and because we have young ears, I'm not going to read it. But unfortunately, my son is reading it in his honors English class. It is full of sexual innuendo, profanity. It is, in short, soft porn. And it's been approved by you. So I have already been working with my friends over here who have been by my side and been my ear, so thank you. And they are working with me to rectify this, but this has been going on since his freshman year at Napa High. First with his drama teacher selecting a drama two production for him to attend that was, to say the least, mortifying, which I did send video to Ian Ainsworth. And then this year, we laughed it off, oh, at least it's just drama. It's not something important like honors English 10, which now the same instructor is with him, and is choosing stories that are littered with profanity, much worse than books that have been banned in the past. And now we're reading about a 15-year-old that has an addiction to something that I don't want to discuss in front of a child. So I'm here to ask that you guys really think about these books that you're, I mean, board-approved, and think about the parents who want to still be parents and have those discussions with their children and not have it addressed in a classroom, especially when you're a 15-year-old boy and having to read the stuff that is being placed in front of him. I know, we have talked a part about, part of it was mistakenly labeled as approved for classroom reading, and that's, I understand, being rectified, and syllabuses are having to be changed. However, the change syllabus that I received from this particular instructor two days ago has two more books on. However, the change syllabus that I received from this particular instructor two days ago has two more books on it. And this, this one is worse than the first one. So we're at a loss, what to do? We don't want him attending the class anymore. He doesn't want to go to the class anymore. And he has a 4.33 grade average. So I feel like we are not doing a service for our children. And I don't feel it's appropriate, so I just hope that you can fix the problem before more kids are exposed.
Ms. Briggs? Thank you so much for coming this evening. So it sounds like we rectified issue number one, but it sounds like you have a second concern, so I'm going to make sure that staff and the Instructional Services Division follows up with you on that.
They have been.
Okay.
And they've been wonderful, like the reason why we're here is because when I do address these questions, I am told, well, these were board-approved.
Right.
And so that's why I'm like, well, I just need you guys to hear our complaint too, instead of always just. It needs to be a group effort if we're going to fix the problem.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And that concludes public comment from the boardroom, so I will ask if we have any online public comment. Ms. Green, is there anyone for public comment?
There is no public comment.
All right. In that case, we will move on to board reports, Board of Education and Student Board Representative.
Thank you. So I know it's been a few weeks at this point, but I'd like to begin by congratulating everyone involved in Big Game and its success this year. I was previously in Vintage High School's leadership class, so I got to see firsthand the monumental efforts put in from people around the community. This year appeared to be no different as it was another success, and fortunately, my vintage crushers won the game. Vintage then followed that up at Foothill High School in a playoff game, which I also attended, so I could see a few friends from over there. And we watched the game together. Unfortunately, we lost that one, but regardless, congrats and great job to everyone involved in Big Game as well as the Vintage Football Team. Then for the last few consecutive weeks, I also had the chance to phone bank to spread the word about Measure A1 and advocate for support. Unfortunately, we know that does not appear to be going through this year, but I trust that we can try again and will aim for a different outcome in a future election cycle. And finally, I thought it would be worth mentioning that there are great virtual career academy courses available through the Napa Valley Education Foundation. Courses include coding and game design, graphic design, IT support essentials, and video editing. If interested, you can register online at their website, which is NVEF.org. They also cover a hundred percent of the cost for students attending high school or college in Napa County, so that's pretty cool. And that concludes my report.
So last meeting, I failed to report that I also attended, I did a site visit at Snow Elementary School, so thank you to Principal Jessica Mottner for hosting me and Trustee Riser. Since that meeting, had a whole bunch of things that I participated in. On the fourteenth of October, I spent quite a bit of time at the Professional Development Day of the school district. That was really inspiring to see how the school district is really prioritizing our, our teachers and staff and bringing all of the professional development to both certificated and classified staff. So that was really inspirational. On the fifteenth of October, I went to the ACHS Art and Music Festival just for a little bit. Got to see really wonderful art by the students and also heard wonderful music by some of the vocalists. On the eighteenth of October, I went online and did a Zoom meeting of the California School Board Association Region Three Membership Meeting, where we heard a little bit about what's going on in the state is in relation to board across the board agendas across the state. And this period of time, I also attended two curriculum and student support committee meetings, which I think will, is on our agenda later on. I attended the coffee with the superintendent at ACMS on the twenty-fifth of October. That was really great to connect with the community and especially the parents. On, also on the twenty-fifth, I actually participated in person the interest-based problem-solving training, which was really, you know, eye-opening for me because I don't ever think about negotiating with employees. I've never had employees, but you know, having this type of working relationship with our unions is so key. And just to get to experience what it felt like to be in that space was really empowering. And just really interesting to, to just understand the whole process. So I'm really happy that our district does that with our, all of our unions, and that's why we have such good relationships with our employees. On the eighth of November, I attended the Canyon Oaks PTO meeting to listen to parent engagement. And this past Saturday, I was, I attended the Napa Valley Band Reserve put on by ACHS Booster Club for, for the band. Parade happened in American Canyon for the first time ever, right across, or right on the street of Canyon Oaks, which is wonderful. Really amazing to see all the colors from all of our neighboring communities and also attended the field competition at Memorial Stadium, and I heard we had twenty-five schools and came from as far away as Nevada and Oregon, so really exciting there. And had the pleasure of presenting some awards along with a couple of my fellow trustees. That was really fun. And Monday, I was supposed to attend the, the Selpa Community Advisory Committee meeting, but I last minute was not able to, but I'll be reporting out, I had some conversations with the leaders of that, so I'll be reporting on that later. And this morning, I attended the Napa Valley College Annual High School Breakfast, which was really informational, really great information and really inspiring all the new programs that they're trying to put in there and really supporting our students after they finish. And actually, some of them, when they're dual-enrolling from our school district, I'm hoping to see more of that. And I'll close by saying happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, this last month, I think, was not a lot of school site visits or able to attend some meetings by or presentations, but more so a lot of one-on-one interactions with folks. Very engaging, so I felt like I was doing a lot of education when it comes to how our school finances work and our curriculum and HR and unions. As well as our facilities with Measure A1 and A2 in American Canyon. And one in particular struck me the most. There was a lot of inquiry about or curiosity in regards to, or what decisions do the boards make in regards to the topic of our, of our transgender students or transgender community? And it's something that has been brought up to our, our board before, but it was with a volume of folks that I was speaking with. It, it was quite more than what I had expected. And, and coincidentally, Trans Awareness Week is this November thirteenth through nineteenth. And some conversations were, let's just say, interesting. And, but I think it just, it was giving me some, some data out there of just the awareness and education and knowledge of our community when it comes to of our transgender community. And I invite folks, and this was recommended by the Napa County Public Health and their committee called Live Healthy Napa County, to glad.org and look at their trans week awareness, information and documentaries that folks can follow, just because some conversations were a bit alarming and concerning. And I think just for me, it comes from a space of just inclusivity and welcoming, and I appreciate and I am grateful for those conversations. Because I think what it does is just, it's good to talk about it and learn about it and be aware of some of the misinformation that can impact our transgender. And in our case, our students and staff, and one quick data about it was that when people are surveyed, sixty-five percent of them mentioned that they don't know anybody transgender. But when youth are surveyed, fifty percent of them indicate they do know someone who's transgender. So a lot of our young folks are, are more connected to our LGBT community. But many times, it's our adults that vote or our adults that are impacting or coming to public comment or whatnot. So that's what struck me the most out of my many, many, many conversations that I've had this last month. So just wanted to share that. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for those remarks, Trustee Gonzalez-Morris. I appreciate that. Let's see, it's been a busy couple of weeks, a lot of sites, not necessarily site visits, but time onsite combined. So there was a coffee with the superintendent that was very well-attended at American Canyon Middle School. Those are always really interesting and informative to hear what issues parents bring, bring to us in that kind of informal space, and I really appreciate those opportunities to connect with the community and hear what's happening, where the rubber hits the road. I did the next day after that coffee have a site visit along with Trustee Water at American Canyon Middle School. For any community members who haven't been down to that new, newly renovated site, it's really a beautiful middle school campus. And it was my first site visit since, with the new multi-use room in action. I also had a site visit to the Stonebridge Charter School, also with Trustee Water. Many thanks to Principal Brown. It's really interesting to see that very unique and integrated model in action to see really when you have a program that is truly unique and self-contained. What, what an amazing option that is that we offer our students here in the district. I also went to Big Game on the twenty-eighth. And that's just a fun sort of Napa cultural event, regardless of the outcome of the game. Another coffee with the superintendent at Alta Heights. The Curriculum and Student Support Committee met on November ninth, and the Policy Committee met on November tenth. We also had the last week's really informative and powerful, I thought, board study session on our elementary literacy, so I just wanted to thank staff again for such a comprehensive and informative time that we spent last Thursday. And then as Trustee Chu mentioned, she and I both for part were invited to attend the American Canyon Napa Valley Band Reserve Competition, ACHS hosted and put it on. So in the morning was the parade competition. And then in the evening, Trustee Gracia joined us and we were there for the field competition. And I guess that the thing that I took away the most from that experience was watching the expressions on all of the performing students' faces and just seeing that they had found their spot and their tribe and their niche. And you see, you know, group after group after group of kids coming on and coming alive because they're part of a team that's working towards something productive that's important to them. And the gratification and the validation and the camaraderie and the teamwork that goes into those performances was really impressive. So a shout out to the ACHS music team for putting that on. It required a great deal of logistical management, a lot of volunteer hours. There were past student grads coming back and helping as well, so it was neat to see the sort of the continuation of that family after the kids move on from our schools. But it was just, I was very grateful to be a part of it and really impressed. And I'll just close by saying, as we head into the Thanksgiving holiday, I know that teachers across the district will be doing activities with their students, asking them to focus on what they're grateful for. Because that's always what teachers do with their students around this time of year. It's an important focusing reflective activity, and so I will just say that I am grateful for all the teachers and staff of NVUSD this week and all year long. So thank you for all your hard work.
Okay, I guess it's my turn. Well, I too, like our student representative, was engaged in a great deal of community engagement since we last met. And I too went to coffee with the superintendent on the twenty-fifth at American Canyon Middle School and on Election Day at Alta Heights, both well-attended. Also on the twenty-fifth, I went to the, I was able to attend an event at the Central Kitchen with first partner Jennifer Siebel Newsome, and she was very impressed with our healthy food. And I was thrilled to point out that the Central Kitchen had been paid for by a school bond, so that when her husband announced lunches for everybody, we were able to deliver, thanks to a school bond. And and also, it was, you know, earlier, I, I don't know, I told some of you that I'd been to the Central Kitchen at five AM to watch how they did all the work, and it was exhausting. I had to go home and sleep for four hours afterwards. Let's see, I too toured American Canyon Middle School with Riser, agree with everything she said, it's a fabulous place. And went to Stonebridge with Trustee Riser, that too was, it was a lot of fun, and it is a unique program to Napa. You know, a couple of weeks ago, a couple Sundays ago, I went to American Canyon High School and saw the play Curious Case of the Dog in the Nighttime, and it was incredible. What a lot of talent. I had a wonderful time. And then this past Monday, I went back to, I went to Napa Valley College at night and they had, they showed a film about mental health, you know, depression among young people. And it was produced by Ken Burns, and there was a panel discussion led by locals, including Sherry Staglin. That family is big on helping educate people about mental illness. And today I attended the Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee, also went to Napa Valley College Breakfast, their annual high school breakfast. And one thing was said there that was really startling, great speakers, very charismatic people, but in twenty eighteen, forty-eight percent of our community college students in California experienced homelessness at one point. They were living in cars, living on the street, couch surfing, staying with family and friends, you know, different places, no fixed place of residence, in other words. Really shocking. Tuesday, I phoned into a Zoom meeting at the county to support Napa Valley Unified School District. Student Allison Bansik, as she spoke in favor of the county taking serious measures to fight climate change. Attended the Technology Facilities Committee meeting this Tuesday, Board Policy Committee meeting on eleven-ten. Last night, I went to dine and donate for Napa Valley, for Napa Education, Valley Education Foundations. And I also enjoyed the elementary literacy workshop, put me in a good mood for the rest of the week, in fact. And I don't know, I might be leaving something out. It seems like I've been, I was charging all over the place, but that's my report.
Thank you, Trustee Water. All right, and I have a report as well. So on the eighteenth of October, I attended coffee with the superintendent at Bel Air Elementary. And then also on the eighteenth, the Region Three CSBA meeting. The nineteenth, I attended the Curriculum Committee meeting. On the twentieth, a visit to Pueblo Vista. On the twenty-fifth, I attended the Educator Breakfast at NCOE. Also on the twenty-fifth, I attended the Interest-Based Problem-Solving Training at Napa High to better understand the process engaged by our district with our bargaining units. And then on the twenty-seventh, I visited with Principal Ainsworth at Napa High. Also on the twenty-seventh, I met with the Pope Valley Superintendent and President in preparation for my delegate assembly meeting, where I will be representing all of Napa County. And then on the twenty-eighth, I attended Big Game. On the first, I met with Saint Helena Unified President and Superintendent. On the eighth, I met with the President of Calistoga Joint Unified. Also on the eighth, coffee with the superintendent at Alta Heights. On the ninth, the Curriculum Committee meeting. On the tenth, the Board Study Session. On the twelfth, the Band Competition put on by ACHS at Memorial Stadium. Those were some very impressive band performances. And then on the fourteenth, I did a run. And then on the fourteenth, I did a run through of the presentation for our AEC Conference this year, where we will be presenting a couple of topics. And then on the fifteenth, I attended Facilities and Technology Committee. And that concludes my board. Now we move on to Board Representative Reports. Board Representative Report, A, Special Education Community Advisory Committee.
So that committee met on Monday. I was unable to attend, but I did touch base with our two representative parent representatives, Amy Barberi and and Darcy Storm. They're wonderful, wonderful advocates of our, of all special ed programs in the county. And so they filled me in. There was a good discussion on inclusion in schools. They are hoping that there could be more to support general ed teachers to get more training on accommodating students with disabilities and how to integrate them into the classroom. And they're really happy that NVUSD is, has a special ed parent advisory committee where all of the schools are represented by a parent representative. So they're really, you know, hoping to move the needle forward on making our special ed student needs met at all sites. They have launched a monthly disability spotlight flyer that's going to go out to all teachers across NVUSD. So make sure you look forward to those and happy to say that I'm going to be working with with Amy actually on one on twice exceptional. And I've shared in the past that my older child is a twice exceptional child in the school district. So really happy to be sharing some of that experience. And they have a new logo. So in all of their communications that's going to go out, it's really beautiful logo that really is very, a very inclusive looking logo. And they also had a presentation from Parents Can, just to get a have some education for the parents that attended about resources that they can tap into. And that concludes that report.
Okay, H two B, City of American Canyon Liaison Representatives.
And we have not met.
All right, H two C, City of Napa Liaison Representatives.
We have not met.
H two D, Town of Yountville Liaison Representatives, we have also not met. That brings us to H three, Superintendent and Executive Staff.
Thank you, Vice President. Russ, yeah. So good evening, NVUSD Board of Education, Staff and Community. Some of my reports is going to seem redundant because so many of the trustees reported on several of these events where we've all been together celebrating the accomplishments and the students in our school district. So thank you so much for all of your presence. I do want to recognize that, yes, I held my last three coffee with the superintendents for this fall. I want to thank the hosting principals at Bel Air, ACMS and Alta Heights. It was great. It's always great, I think trustee Riser said, to engage with parents in this informal setting to hear what's top of mind for our parents. And I want to thank several of the staff members that come and join and help me with some of the questions that we get related to their areas of oversight and work in the district. So thank you so much. And it was great to be at three schools that have all been improved by our Measure H program. So both the Alta Heights and Bel Air Elementary campuses had been modernized. So it was just great to be able to kind of highlight that to parents and receive the appreciation from parents around what Measure H was able to accomplish, our current bond program that's coming to a close. And then, of course, it's been mentioned, the exceptional transformation that's been implemented over at ACMS and be able to host there in that new space was just a real joy. You know, we haven't had a business meeting in a few weeks, so there'd be a lot to report, lots of school visits. I had a great visit at Canyon Oaks Elementary and they sent a pumpkin with flowers my way. So I want to recognize Principal Vasquez and thank the parents there for them always just being so supportive, open and gracious in their partnership with the school district. But I'm going to focus my report tonight on high schools because I, alongside some of the trustees, as you heard on Saturday evening, did attend that annual Napa Valley Band Reserve. And I think we were really, really impressed. I was there alone last year, but it was great to have three trustees with me in the cold. It was very cold at Memorial Stadium that night. But to be able to distribute those awards at the end and just see all the talent, the ACHS Marching Band and Color Guard, although small compared to some of the bands that were there, just really presented so well. They represented the school district so well. They did an amazing job of competing in the event, but also serving as a host, like was mentioned, for twenty-five high schools from across Northern California and even beyond. I think you mentioned it. Trustee Riser, we had bands competing from as far as Oregon and Nevada. And what we learned that evening is that several of these bands love this competition because Memorial Stadium in the high school band scene, competitive band scene has has come to be known as the spot with the best acoustics for these band competitions. So there was a lot of appreciation for our state-of-the-art facility that we know is used for all the sports. But it was great to be able to showcase it for these performances. Also, paid by a previous school bond. Yeah, so lots of connections here to how important it is to generate that local revenue for our students and and community. I also want to honor the parent volunteers, ACHS parent volunteers. They're always so welcoming. Now it's the second year at that event and they just do an incredible job investing so much time and energy into making this event happen for our musically gifted youth. So I want to thank them. Sticking to the high school theme, I want to thank our new year one principal Jessica Hutchinson for a very productive visit at Vintage High School yesterday. It was great. We did milk break together over with our crushers at VHS and they were just doing a great job with expressing gratitude. The leadership students were there on the quad, just doing a great job of getting ready to wrap up and express gratitude before we go on to Thanksgiving break. I also had a really nice time checking in at Napa High School yesterday. And I've really enjoyed listening to the NHS Band. I know my my colleagues to the right all week have been in the Ed Center rehearsing for their concert and it's, it's just been a joy to have that as in the background all week. This week, I feel like I've had the opportunity to really absorb and observe our comprehensive high schools in action. And I have to say, it's always so inspiring to see our ninth and twelve, ninth through twelfth graders take advantage of the wide range. Really wide range of enriching, amazing opportunities our high schools offer students in NVUSD. And, you know, we saw it tonight in our four high schoolers who were honored as Students of the Month. You just hear kind of the breadth of experience that they have and how rich their high school experience is. The last couple of weeks have also been really exciting because as everyone knows, it was Election Day on November eighth. As preliminary election results continue to be tabulated, I want to thank everyone who supported the campaign efforts for our two school bonds. I feel incredibly proud of the effort so many gave to support our schools and our students. The Measure A one and A two campaigns were led by volunteers, including Bond Committee Chair Barbara Franco, who oversaw the Napa Measure A one campaign and Kasama Lee, who oversaw the Measure A two campaign for American Canyon Schools, as well as the many parents, teachers and even high school students who were involved in that. These volunteers gave their time to educate thousands of people about the need of our aging schools and to answer a lot of questions about how bond funds would be spent, reaching voters throughout the district, also dedicating a tremendous amount of time to help people understand the complexities of school finance and why school bonds are the means for districts to be able to make capital improvements and modernization projects happen at the local level. The final election results will be posted on December second, so we'll continue to closely monitor those results. And as a reminder, in order for each bond measure to pass, they must receive fifty-five percent of total votes. I continue to feel proud of our NVUSD community and look forward to the final election results. And lastly, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. I hope that our staff, students and families enjoy some rest, some relaxation and connection during this upcoming break. And with that, I'm going to pass it on to our Assistant Superintendents and some who are representing our Assistant Superintendents. Ms. Dana Page is at a conference related to HR. And our Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala is away at the California Statewide Symposium for Chief Business Officials, learning about what's on the horizon for next year's budget. So that's really important. So we have a couple of people representing. We're going to start out with Assistant Director Gina. DeLuca's here, going to be providing the report for the Human Resources Division.
Good evening, members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Musetti and Student Representative, Board Representative Gomez. I am excited to report that the Human Resources Department has officially launched our NVUSD Careers Platform website, which has been designed to seamlessly integrate with our existing NVUSD website. When a visitor to NVUSD.org clicks the Join Our Team link on our homepage, they can then click Find a Job, which brings them to our external-facing platform. This platform with the theme See Your Future in Their Eyes provides job seekers with a wealth of information about what it's like to work here in the NVUSD and is organized by both student support and district support positions. This interactive engaging site includes a map feature which allows visitors to seek open positions by location and to narrow their job search by entering keywords and date ranges. The site can be translated into any language, looks equally good on both computers and smartphones and features photographs of our very own NVUSD employees. From this platform, job seekers can then easily apply for an open position using our existing Edjoin application, application process. In addition to providing job seekers with greater information about our work environment, this platform utilizes the power of the internet to share our open positions across multiple platforms, such as Indeed, which which connects us with a broader applicant pool. Although our certificated employees are accustomed to using Edjoin to seek for and apply for open positions, classified positions in areas such as transportation, food services, operations, clerical and other non-certificated roles are often found through other popular job search engines that our new platform will allow us to reach. Over the next few months, as we continue to refine this site, we will add content to the career development portion of this platform where we will provide future and current employees with information regarding career pathways and professional development opportunities available through the NVUSD. At a future board meeting, HR plans to share data regarding the impact this platform is having in helping us to attract the best possible talent to the NVUSD. In addition, HR leadership has begun in-person check-ins with our new classified staff hired since July twenty twenty-two. As part of our enhanced onboarding process, we believe these brief face-to-face visits with our employees who have been on the job for three to six months will help us to build connections, identify issues and improve our new employee experience as we welcome to them to Team NVUSD. For the visits that we have conducted so far, the feedback from employees regarding this process has been overwhelmingly positive. I'd also like to highlight our latest staff spotlight subject, Jill Madron. Jill is an administrative assistant, also known as an office manager at Canyon Oaks Elementary School. She is a go-to person for everyone at her site, including staff, students, parents and administrators. Jill also serves as an administrative assistant lead, assisting all office managers throughout the district and advising district office management on issues impacting the clerical staff at sites. Jill is known for her great follow-through, calm, supportive demeanor, tremendous knowledge and willingness to help others. We are so fortunate to have Jill working for us in the NVUSD. If you know an extraordinary employee, please consider nominating them for Staff Spotlight Feature so we can recognize and celebrate them. Thank you. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. DeLuca. Dr. Booth, you're ready to present on behalf of business?
Actually, Executive Director Jenna Burrows will be presenting. She's on Zoom.
I didn't see her online, so I thought maybe you were.
I'm here.
Oh, there you are. Oh, you're on the Okay, I thought you were. I didn't see you and I thought, well, maybe he passed it on to Dr. Booth and he was going to be put on the spot to do it spontaneously, but Ms. Burrows is here to deliver. And so if you could go ahead and provide the report for Business Services, thank you, Ms. Burrows.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Musetti. Good evening, Board of Trustees. I'll provide a quick update for the Board and community. The Data and Assessment Team is currently in the process of verifying the data in Aries in preparation for the Fall CalPad State Reporting Deadline, which is coming up in December. They are also busy preparing accounts and trainings for LPAC and CASP testing, which will be here in the spring. And later this evening, Dr. Booth will present our latest STAR results. The technology team continues to offer important training and support to all district faculty and staff. And the adoption of our classroom management system is increasing by the day, which is great. Next week, we will resume our critical network infrastructure work, which entails all new networks, switch replacements up for secondary sites through winter break. The enrollment team is heading into the final two weeks of open enrollment. The new computer stations in the enrollment center and the extended hours provided have really allowed many families to receive in-person support. The team is working to process and organize all these applications and registrations so that the open enrollment lottery can take place in early to mid-December. And last, Fiscal Services Team is wrapping up the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year audit and finishing the final retro payroll. This is a very busy time for business office as we're finalizing our first interim update to our budget and will include the latest information we have available. And that report will be brought to the Board on December eighth. That concludes my report. Thank you very much.
Excellent job, Ms. Burrows. Thank you so much for being here tonight, presenting on behalf of Business Services. Great job substituting Ms. DeLuca and Ms. Burrows. Very proud. So next we'll go to Assistant Superintendent Andrea Jennings, who will provide the report on behalf of the Instructional Support Division.
Thank you, Dr. Musetti. Good evening, Vice President Gracia, Board Trustees, Dr. Musetti, Student Representative Gomez and the NVUSD community. The Instructional Support Services Division continues to focus on successfully achieving the annual board priorities in alignment with Board Priority Number Three, centered on strengthening early learning programs with the expansion of children eligible for Transitional Kindergarten, or TK. A TK leadership team has been formed to guide the work of preparing to welcome even younger students to our TK classrooms. The TK leadership team is composed of the Director of Elementary Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services, a district academic specialist and a representative group of TK teachers. The team has met twice thus far and has made progress in aligning the TK instructional program with the TK vision statement and goals established last year. Today, the TK leadership team met and made preliminary agreements in selecting TK priority standards with a focus on foundational social emotional development, language and literacy and math. During the initial planning stages last year, parent input was gathered and we look forward to sharing a fully developed plan with parents later this school year for additional feedback. As we work to enrich garden-based science experiences for students, our environmental science teacher on special assignment Karen Fleming has visited all elementary and middle school gardens to gather data on current systems and infrastructures in place. Currently, students at Alta Heights have been planting seeds, transplanting flower bulbs and observing the natural world like scientists. Additionally, Silverado students have investigated what grows in the fall in the Silverado garden as well as a fall fruit taste test of persimmons, my personal favorite, in Mississauga's sixth grade class. Our goal is to create a model of NVU C garden classroom infrastructure, identify curriculum connections experiences at each grade level for students in the K through eighth grade. We are excited that NVUSD was awarded a Farm to Fork Incubator Grant to help support garden-based science and nutrition for students. At the secondary level, NVUSD High School counselors, administrators, district staff and some of our wonderful trustees attended the Napa Valley College Seventeenth Annual High School Breakfast. This helps to strengthen our partnership with the Napa Valley College, which we know is a key destination for often, for many of our students. Staff learned about the new guided pathways and learning communities at Napa Valley College. These new learnings strengthen our ability to counsel students on their journey to meet college and career goals and support their transition to post-secondary education, a key tactic of NVUSD, of our NVUSD strategic plan goal number one. In the Special Education Department, elementary teacher Kimberly Murphy Crane has been sharing incredible learning that is taking place in her classroom at Snow. She has seen growth in her students with the implementation of the Teach Town curriculum that was approved by the Board last year. Students are just demonstrating progress with conceptual skills and current events, then taking those skills home to practice. Parents are sharing videos of students sharing their knowledge at home, all as part of this new program. Later this evening, you will hear a presentation, or hear two presentations, one regarding the STAR assessment data from the beginning of the year and also about our district-wide Professional Learning Day in October. We are eager to share about the foundational work being done to support students' academic growth. Last week, as many, some of you mentioned, the elementary instructional team presented to the Board on literacy at the elementary level. I want to thank Matt Manning, Director of Curriculum Instruction and English Learner Services, our dynamic district academic specialist, Kirsten Gerhart, Carly Miller and Tracy Lys, and three amazing classroom teachers, Tracy Sims from Canyon Oaks, Rebecca LaCoe from Willow, and Christina Lawrence from Browns Valley, who led the Board through an engaging and immersive experience. And lastly, I want to congratulate our Executive Director of Special Education, who was honored as State Special Education Administrator of the Year by the Association of California School Administrators, or otherwise known as AXA, on November 4th at their annual conference in San Diego. Director Rossetti provides professional support in the special education field throughout the state of California. We are proud that she was honored for her accomplishments. Thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Assistant Superintendent Andrew Jennings. And yes, congratulations to Terry Lynn Rossetti. And we have Assistant Superintendent Mr. Pearson, who oversees operational services, who's going to close us out here on the reports.
Thank you, Dr. Musetti. Good evening, Vice President Gracia, NVSD Board of Education Trustees, Student Board Representative Sam Gomez, and members of the NVSD community. Thank you for the opportunity to allow for me to provide you with an update of operational services. In Food Service, earlier today, NVSD students were served a Thanksgiving dinner for lunch consisting of turkey, gravy, mashed potatoes, green beans, a dinner roll, and a churro. It was all enjoyed very much for all the students. This was a huge lift for the Food Service Team, and I want to commend the teamwork of all of our staff members. Approximately 10,000 Thanksgiving meals were served throughout the district today. I also want to thank and give a shout out to all the sites for gathering volunteers to help with the serving today. It was very, very helpful to have extra hands there in each of our kitchens. NVSD students continue to participate in our breakfast and lunch programs in record numbers, as evidenced by the October 2022 monthly reimbursement claims of $1,111,000. So those are huge numbers. As you recall, I brought you a million-dollar figure in September. When comparing October 2021 to October of 2022, our breakfast program saw a 43% increase, while our lunch program saw a 12% increase. We're still seeing an increase in students participating in our lunch and our breakfast programs. I want to acknowledge the incredible work of the entire Food Service Department, who are still very short-staffed, yet they continue to push on. And I want to specifically mention the excellent teamwork of our specialists, Megan Hupp, Mohammed Yassin, Central Kitchen Managers Melissa Zeeh, and Renee Story, and the office staff of Joe Aurora and Rosie Mendoza. Their exceptional leadership has been quite impressive and kind of just kept everything together during these really difficult times. Staff is taking necessary steps to apply for the latest round of 2022 Kitchen Infrastructure and Training Fund, which is called KIT, available through the California Department of Education. Our NVSD NASH has already received a first installment of KIT funds earlier this year from an opportunity to apply, and that totaled $397,000. $60,000 went for staff training, or will go for staff training, and $337,000 went for the infrastructure. And we look forward to applying for this additional funding again. This is all part of Governor Newsom's and Jennifer Sebel Newsom's needs to improve the kitchen programs throughout the state of California. And then finally, yes, the California Department of Food and Agriculture, which is called CDFA, awarded NVSD last week $176,000 for our grant submission titled "Soil, Science, and Seasonal Vegetables." How about that, Trustee Water? NVSD was one of only 100 school districts across the state of California who received the grant funding. The grant's funds will be targeted at nine of our community eligibility provision schools in NVSD to improve and expand their current school gardens, along with connecting garden-based nutrition and next-generation science standards. In Maintenance and Operations, Directors Gloria Aguirre and Albert De Souza have been exploring opportunities to purchase electric and battery-powered equipment that maintenance and operations staff can use to help reduce our carbon footprint. Staff has been specifically testing the effectiveness and efficiency of electric power washers, blowers, hedge trimmers, and other power tools that use gasoline. And there's also actually some funding that's through the city of Napa that we're also investigating to see if we can make the conversion with some of these equipment. Transportation is following a similar path. Tonight, there's a resolution seeking Board approval to allow Director of Transportation Justin Binion to be able to participate in the Zero and Low Emissions Program funding, which will allow Director Binion to be able to explore purchasing electric buses and the necessary infrastructure through grant funding opportunities. So we look forward to that approval. And then in Facilities, this past weekend, as was mentioned earlier, the American Canyon High School did host the Napa Valley Band Review. High school marching bands could participate in two types of competition. It was a street competition. It was held down by American Canyon High School, and then, which had 15 schools participating. And then a field competition that was later held at Memorial Stadium, which had 24 schools participating. And yes, American Canyon does a great job of putting that on, but there is actually a backbone to all of that. And there's a ton of planning that goes into that. And so we want to, I want to say thank you to the staff who were instrumental in making sure the event went smoothly, specifically Gloria Aguirre and Albert De Souza and Marie McMurray, but also the people that were on-site during that particular day. Head Custodian Kelly Holmes, Holmes at ACHS, and Pedro Lara, Head Custodian at Vintage, and Tony Lara, Head Custodian at Napa High, also played instrumental roles here at Memorial Stadium. And this year, unlike many other years, the weather did cooperate during the band review. For some reason, I have absolutely no idea, but it always seems to rain on the band review. It always rains at the stadium, but it didn't this year, so that was a good sign on that.
You stand to be corrective.
Say it again?
You need to be corrected.
Oh, it did rain?
It just a little.
It turned over for a minute.
Okay, I'll take just a little. I mean, it's a daily.
Five minutes, and your staff did an amazing job.
Then that's fine. I'm not too worried about that then. Okay. All right. But anyways, it was a good time this had by all, and that is it. Thank you. And that concludes my report for tonight.
It was a strange sprinkle out of nowhere. It was odd.
All right. I think we're moving on now to the approval of the consent agenda. Background information on these items is provided to the Board prior to the meeting. A common motion takes action without discussion on roll-call vote unless discussion of items is requested by the Board members.
Move to approve.
First by trustee Chu. Can I get a second?
Yes, a second.
Second by trustee Gonzalez Morris.
I apologize. I was thinking that students were in the back that I waved. But let's finish the motion. Sorry. Second on the consent agenda.
Okay. Add Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Ms. Pressy, can I get a roll-call vote, please?
Yes. Student Board Member Gomez.
Hi.
Trustee Gracia.
Hi.
Trustee Water.
Hi.
Trustee Rizer.
Hi.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Hi.
Trustee Chu.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, that passed. On to presentation and discussion. J1A Business Services Fall 2022 STAR Data Presentation.
Okay, can you all hear me?
Perfect.
Yes, we can. All right. Good evening, Vice President Gracia, Trustees, Dr. Musetti, and Student Board Member Gomez. This evening, I will share with you our Fall 2022 STAR Assessment Results, which will serve as our baseline data for this new school year. As a reminder, the STAR assessments serve as our district-wide screener for reading and math in grades K-12. And after presenting the data, my colleagues from Instructional Services will speak to the implications of the data on their division's work. All right. Our district work around assessments falls under our Strategic Plan Goal Number One, Student Learning Achievement and Access. And specifically, it falls under the College and Career Readiness Initiative and the tactic describing the development of a robust and balanced assessment system. Additionally, the STAR assessments provide a key data point in supporting our annual board priorities. The STAR data in both math and reading will assist the instructional team in strengthening Tier One math and reading instruction and help identify appropriate interventions at the Tier Two and Tier Three levels. The instructional team will share more about this later on in the presentation. I'd like to take a moment to review for the Board and community which students take which assessments. Students in grades three through 12 take the STAR reading test. Students in grades kindergarten through second grade take the STAR Early Literacy Test until their reading abilities develop enough that they can be reliably assessed with STAR reading. And typically, this transition happens in grade two. And students in grades one through 12 take the STAR Math Test. And now we'll look at the results. The first data point we'll look at this evening is the scaled score. Students who take a STAR assessment are given a scaled score based on the number of questions answered correctly and the difficulty of those questions, and allows us to compare student progress over time and across grade levels. The more questions a student answers correctly and the more difficult those questions, the higher the scaled score. This table shows the average scaled score for the literacy and math assessments for each grade level within the screening window. For example, the average fifth grader earned a scaled score of 1,004 on the STAR reading test, which was 45 scaled score points higher than the average fourth grader, who earned a scaled score of 959. You'll notice that the increases vary by grade level with larger increases at the elementary level. This is consistent with what we see with the national data. I want to recognize that 12th graders do see a slight decline, but this is also consistent with national STAR data, which shows 12th graders either maintaining or dipping slightly compared to 11th graders. Next, we have the percentile rank. Students are given a percentile rank indicating the percentage of other students nationally who obtain scores equal to or lower than that of the particular student. For example, a student in the 35th percentile in STAR reading performed better than 35% of students nationally in the same grade level who took the assessment at that same time of year. Renaissance categorizes students based on their percentile rank. Students who score better than 40% of students nationally in their grade level at that time of the school year are considered at or above benchmark. And there are four total categories ranging from at or above benchmark all the way to those in need of urgent intervention who are scoring below the 10th percentile rank. Remember, the students are expected to earn a higher and higher scaled score as they progress through their learning. For example, an eighth grader who took the STAR Math Test in the fall needs a scaled score of 1078 to be at or above benchmark, and that minimum scaled score increases over time. And by the time that eighth grader takes the STAR test in the spring, they will need a scaled score of 1094. Nearly all kindergarten and first grade graders took the STAR Early Literacy Test. This is the percentage of students who scored at or above benchmark. Since the second graders are taking different tests, either STAR Early Literacy or STAR Reading throughout the year, depending on their literacy skills, it makes it difficult to look at the proficiency rates together. Instead, this slide shows the number of students who took STAR Reading compared to STAR Early Literacy. And this fall, we had 44% of second graders take STAR Reading, while last fall, we had 41%. This is an indicator that second graders are coming to us this year slightly more prepared for reading than last year. And we now switch to the STAR reading test. Here are the proficiency rates for the elementary level. Here is the middle school data. And this data does include the middle school students at Browns Valley and Shear participating in the K-8 pilots. And we have the high school data here for STAR Reading as well. And we now switch to math. Here we have the elementary proficiency rates. And middle school. And again, this includes the middle school students at Shear and Browns Valley. And the high school STAR Math data. Another data point that Renaissance uses is the student growth percentile, or SGP. The SGP indicates the percentage of students nationally at the same grade level and with a similar score history as a particular student who grew less than that student over a defined period of time. For example, a student with an SGP of 60 from spring to fall grew better than 60% of students nationally who had a similar score as that student in the spring. Students with an SGP between 35 and 65 are making typical growth, while those with an SGP below 35 are making low growth, and those with an SGP above 65 are making high growth. Right? By definition of the SGP, 65% of students nationally should be making typical or high growth. And for NVUSD, that number is just over 65%. Or 65% of students are making that level of growth, which puts our students' growth performance in line with the national data. And here we do go a little deeper and look at the performance levels of students who are making low growth and those making typical or high growth. So for example, of all the students who made typical or high growth in math, 60.7% of them are in the urgent intervention category. You'll notice that the majority of students making typical or high growth are in the intervention or urgent intervention category, especially when it comes to math. And this is the percentage of students at or above benchmark in reading and math by subgroup. It's important to note that while our English learners struggle in both reading and math, the performance of re-designated students is significantly higher, indicating that students are much better prepared after they've received the necessary English language development instruction and successfully reclassify as English proficient. And finally, one of the reasons we adopted the STAR assessments in the fall of 2020 was because the STAR data serves as a predictor of cast performance. Now that we have our cast data from last spring, I'd like to share the cast proficiency rates from last spring to the STAR proficiency rates last spring based on the state benchmarks. As you can see, the cast proficiency rates are very close to what STAR predicted. This rule enforces the use of this assessment tool to predict cast performance and supports instructional staff in strengthening student learning. So I want to take this opportunity to recognize and thank the Board again for supporting this important assessment tool. And with that, I will pass it to my colleagues in Instructional Services.
Thank you, Dr. Booth, and the data assessment team for providing that data for us. So upon review of the end-of-year data on the STAR Reading and STAR Math, the Instructional Services Team charted a course of action directly aligned to Board Priority, Board Annual Priority Number One and Board Annual Priority Number Two. And so this evening, you'll hear an update on the progress that we've made with those two priorities since August, as we are staying the course. The data that we received in September tells us that it is still real and relevant to continue with those goals. Yeah, I'll just say next slide. So with that, I'll hand it over to Director Manning to start us off with elementary.
Thank you, Director Ready. So supporting professional learning communities is a key priority in developing and increasing high-quality Tier One instruction for all students, TK and TK through 12th grade. We will speak to this as we review Board Priority Number One, knowing that it is also critically important and relevant as we seek to increase high-quality Tier One instruction for all students as called, as we're called to do in Board Annual Priority Number Two. We are collaborating with elementary and secondary staff on improving and the implementation of K-12 site leader and teacher professional learning communities focused on using data cycles district-wide. These data cycles are termed "learning sprints." The Fall Professional Learning Day was leveraged to move this work forward K-12. Kindergarten through fifth-grade teachers at the elementary level and math and ELA teachers at the secondary level have been trained in the use of learning sprints to strengthen the effectiveness of professional learning communities. A learning sprint is a four-to-six-week data-driven learning cycle used to measure the impact of instruction on student learning. The first learning sprint cycle will come to an end in December, and that will be followed up by two more guided cycles this academic year. With regard to vertical alignment of math instructional strategies and intervention at elementary, we have continued our focus on strengthening the level of student discourse in Number Corner, a component of our Bridges Math Program. This is a continued effort that began last year as we began to address the need for increased engagement and higher-order thinking being prompted and guided in math classrooms. Principals are continuing to lead this work at the site level and are provided with monthly tools to use in their classroom observation. And for providing feedback to teachers, additional Bridges Math Intervention materials have been purchased for use during small-group instruction and during after-school math-focused interventions. Pass to Director Ready.
Last year, we vertically aligned the priority standards in TK-12, and this year, we've transitioned to now vertically aligning our instructional practices. I want to give a special thank you to our fifth-grade teachers who joined our team and helped provide that guidance and that transition. First of all, fifth through 12th grade math teachers were trained on the use of proficiency scales to support students with clarity around their learning intentions. This also supports with providing accurate feedback.
around their learning intentions. This also supports with providing accurate feedback and progress monitoring. The students, it helps them understand as they look at their goals, where they're at in their learning, where they need to go on their learning and provides them tools and resources to be able to take that next step. Additionally, a cohort of K twelve math teachers are learning and implementing instructional practices from a uh strategies approach that's called building the thinking classroom in mathematics. So we have teachers joining us from fifth through twelfth grade who are implementing practices and engaging students, starting off with new tasks, looking at um highly engaging a task that require collaborative inquiry that require processes that engage them up at whiteboards. So imagine a classroom around the room with whiteboards where students are engaging in these tasks and then reflecting on their learning together and reporting out their learning to their teams. The academic specialists and coaches are in those classrooms providing support not only to the teachers, but also to the students and having them reflect on their learning. Next slide, please. So there's much overlap and alignment that you'll hear about the strategies and approaches between mathematics and providing it to um students in all areas so that we support high quality tier one instruction. The adoption of the master plan for multilingual learners, which the board approved earlier this year, has set the focus for our TK twelve teams on supporting students with high quality interactions. During the fall professional learning day, all of our elementary and secondary staff had the opportunity to engage in sessions that focus specifically on high quality interactions, which you'll hear more about later on this evening. Principals and assistant principals learning has an ongoing focus at both the elementary and secondary level in providing staff with additional support with regard to high quality interactions and what to look for in their classrooms. Multilingual learners at the secondary level are provided monthly staff development focused on how to support their students in their classrooms in an integrated way. Set to such examples that are coming up are academic vocabulary and deconstructing prompts. Our core curriculum is another key priority that we have to support high quality tier one instruction and ensure that it is guaranteed and viable. At both the elementary and secondary level, we continue to engage and support teachers in new curriculum adoptions, specifically with science. At the secondary level, we're providing additional support with the newly adopted world language so that as you heard students earlier this evening talk about the importance of learning both in English and in Spanish and in other languages that we provide such as French and Mandarin. The second history and the secondary history and social studies teachers are also engaged in the second round of a pilot curriculum and will have a third round with a recommendation to the board in March for core curriculum. This will be updating our curriculum, which is a a need that we've had for a long time. English language arts teachers are identifying core novels at this moment and each grade level that uh will bring recommendations to the board later on this spring. And our English and ELD and math teachers will begin the adoption process. Our steering committee for mathematics will start in uh December. The instructional services division is vertically aligning instructional practices in English and in math, which staff are using within learning sprints, which you just heard from Director Manning. And K twelve staff are engaged of communities of practice, both at the elementary and secondary level. One that is a TK twelve aligned is our writing revolution, which supports students with developing the writing skills. And this is across various curriculums, English, science, social studies, how to use those strategies in order to engage in a short sentences, complex sentences, all the way up to a a lengthy essay. So you'll hear more about writing revolution um in our board study session in January. And I'll turn it back over to Director Manning.
Thank you. So training and coaching around tier one reading interventions has begun. District academic specialists are working with teachers on best practices for small groups, identifying appropriate assessment tools and using out of grade level materials for meeting the needs of students. The first kindergarten through fifth grade English language arts community of practices years underway and the focus is on teacher, helping teachers identify students who need phonological awareness, support and selecting phonological awareness strategies to intervene with students in small groups. Middle schools have designated flex time to respond to the needs of all students with a targeted focus on tier two and tier three interventions in math and reading. All staff have been trained in the intervention programs. The implementation of responsive intervention will begin in trimester two for middle school. All high schools have designated times within the bell schedule for tier two and tier three support. They are currently defining the purpose and strategies used during those times. Thank you, and we'll open up for questions and comments at this time. Thank you.
Before we take board comments and questions, I'll ask uh Ms. Green, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
We do have one public comment in the boardroom, uh Ms. Norma Ortiz.
Um, in regards to the report of the star uh math. Uh, I'm sorry, the um reading. I feel in in the part of interventions, it's it's not really clear to me how that how that information um might have some sort of um changes in terms of how students might have some sort of impact. So it's not really clear to me at this time. I would like to get a little bit more clarity on that in terms of um possible uh suggestions for um the supports. Perhaps it might be a good idea to have, um, I attended a training um two days ago. And they were talking about um how high impact tutoring uh could support interventions, but not as as obviously for those students who are more um uh challenge, uh, feel that there's more challenges to learning or that need more support. But how about uh thinking about those high achievers, right, the supports and that could have been enhancing uh on the part also of the unformedish learning that um some students are experiencing. And there was a maximum point that was brought out about asynchronous tutoring in and out of school with more human connection to also enhance other areas. And perhaps um a good idea in this respect could be in some sort of collaborations or partnerships uh with the local college and students. Um, in terms of the master plan, it would continue to, uh, we had a lot of discussion on this item in our last DLEC meeting. And I think it's important that there will be um more opportunities to um command and bring feedback and input of uh ELEC and DLEC reps, uh, which I include myself in that aspect. And also um the opportunity for uh for the community to also um comment. And I think there were a lot of comments and good points and questions regarding some of those aspects and suggestions. Um, so I look forward to follow up with that. Um, thank you.
Thank you. All right. And now we will open it up for uh trustee comments and or questions. All right, trustee Riser.
Um, thank you for that presentation. Um. I always think it's important to um remember that these are snapshots. This data is a snapshot in time from September. Is that right? When this was administered? And I think there are some definite bright spots in the data. You know, we discussed this before, or I guess it was in the um the curriculum committee when I had this presentation already that um you know, the standards that we're looking at and and you know, it's important to use these tools as Dr. Abud mentioned to have these snapshots so that we can compare. It's a, it's a, an important tool to measure growth and progress. But I also think it's important for us to remember that we can't be too married to the outcome of any particular assessment um in light of the larger national context. Or we just need to see it in the larger national context that what all of our students um have been through in the last two years. Every student missed instruction. Every student had their life disrupted. Um, and we will be dealing with the implications of the impact of the pandemic for a lot of years to come. So I think it's really relevant to highlight that we are tracking with the national data trends that our students are performing similarly to other students nationally that also went through um the difficulties of the last few years. Um, I also think it's important just briefly to say um to keep in mind the context of the the difficult work that teachers are doing every day in the classroom and what it was that our teachers went through over these last several school years. Um, and the pressures on our teachers um and the demands on them and the difficulty in our hiring landscape to um to fill our positions, although we have been lucky in that in that realm with our uh certificated uh openings for the most part. But I think it's all in a larger picture. Um, when we talk about the interventions that we're laying out here, I'll remind anyone that's listening that may not have thought about this, but we've talked about the substitute teacher shortage and the fact that our interventionists are frequently pulled away from doing that work in order to cover the um immediate sort of safety and supervision needs that we have due to the substitute teacher shortage. And I also did some in inquiring with staff about sort of the percentage of kids that were able to reach with our interventions right now. Um, and certainly uh in a perfect world, we would be having complete interventions for every student that was in need of intervention. But we are dealing with um limited financial resources and in particular, a really difficult hiring landscape. So um, those are all contextual factors um that I just wanted to put on the table for anyone um in the community that may be listening. And the last thing I'll say is that, you know, when we talk about students meeting grade level standards or approaching grade level or these proficiencies and percent of proficient. You know, we're talking about human being, student learners and these uh standards um and great, what we call a grade level standards are arbitrary. You know, they were arbitrarily arrived at by professional educators deciding that we need to have standards so that fourth grade means fourth grade everywhere in the state, for example. But they're arbitrary. So I just um think that anyone that might look at testing data and feel alarmed that we have not um gotten every student up to proficient. Um, at this point, I just think it's important to keep that context in mind. But there are bright spots. I think the elementary math scores are really indicate um the the impact of our for perhaps our learning sprint last year with the number corner. Um, you know, there was a metaphor that I may have shared before in a meeting when when I was an educator that I heard at a presentation where it was Dennis Parker was his name. And he said, you know, teaching is like taking two gallons of water and trying to pour it into a one gallon jug um and not get distracted by the water that's spilling on the floor. And it's a really difficult thing to do to be strategic and purposeful and not get distracted by whatever water may be puddling on the floor. And I think that this presentation shows us that our our leadership team, our instructional division is doing that. Um, you are laser focused on the important things that we need to look at. Um, the professional learning, the professional support, the communities of practice, all of those things that will really um result in system change. So I want to thank you for being so strategic with your limited resources. Um, teachers also have limited um bandwidth. And I think that like the, for example, the example of the number corner that we focused on last year or the example that Director Manning brought to us with the um training teachers to focus on identifying which kids by the time by second grade still need phonics support like that. I I know it's, you know, geeky for me to be focusing on that, but but those are the kinds of things that will um that will get you efficiently and quickly to identify the kids that need that support. And if you still need phonics support in second grade, then that's a huge um obstacle to your getting, you know, getting anywhere close to grade level in your reading. So uh, sorry, I'm rambling, but um I just want to say that I think that that you don't turn a ship on a dime. I can say from my experience in the classroom and my two years on the board that the things that the instructional division identify as um worthy of focus um are in my view exactly uh the the right kinds of things. And so when you put in your presentation, stay the, we're staying the course. Um, I think it would be unreasonable to expect that identifying those priorities and putting the resources that you are um behind our staff and with our students and with our curriculum. Um, it would be unreasonable to expect that that would be an immediate change in our in our test scores. But I think that you've laid out a really smart um and and thoughtful and strategic course. Um, and I'm confident that it will continue to uh have positive effects for our kids.
Do we have any other trustees who would like to ask questions or make comments? Trustee Water?
Briefly, thank you very much, uh, trustee Riser for saying that. And a couple of things feel uh to feel optimistic about is you you pointed out that the scores, you know, second grade, there's a progression. The scores are going up. And now you were an elementary school teacher. I was a high school teacher. And I grinned when I saw twelfth grade, the score is taking a slight dip because I can just see the students going. Soon I will be done with this fail of tears. I will be off leading my life, being independent, you know, getting respect. And and so buy on that test. I mean, I I mean, I've seen it and occasionally I got trouble in trouble for it when I was my student. So um you know, I grin when I see that. Uh. The other thing I want to say is human beings are off, if any, I've dealt with people in this election season who seem to think that every single one of our students ought to be in the ninety ninth percentile. And um I am fascinated how resilient human beings are. Because just think where we were two and a half years ago. Think about it. Um, and they've recovered. Obviously, I have not, you know, I don't think I'll ever forget it. And um but it's like, what are you talking about? What pandemic? You know, people need to pull up their socks and get with it. And uh, it's not that easy. And um the other thing is, it's, it's, it's not, I'm not making an excuse. I mean, there's a reason here for for some of the things we're dealing with. But you do have a plan and we saw it recently and it's, I think it's a good plan. Um, I uh, something I never told people was that um I almost became a reading specialist. In fact, I'm two two uh courses short of becoming a reading specialist. And um you know, moved away from San Francisco. There was no distant learning where I went. And so that, you know, that sort of, but I did take a lot of reading instruction. And one thing I learned is a lot of things work. There are techniques that work, but you need to be consistent in them. And what we've done in the past is um, we've gotten uh, I'm saying we, you know, just the district. We've gotten distracted. Um, and okay, this is gonna work. No, wait, this is going to work. But I think if we have a reasonable plan, which you all have, and we stick with it, we're consistent, we're going to see positive results. And um, dare I ask, it sounds as if I hear something like writing across the curriculum is coming forward. Right? And this is something called writing revolution. Boy, I'd I'd like to, you know, learn more about that. Now, and I thank you very much for this presentation. And I'm not going to pick on teachers either because, you know, I know how hard they're working. I know how hard they're working and I know how hard it is. Because I was in the classroom when this thing entered. Okay. And this changed, changed our lives. Made them much harder.
Trustee Gonzalez Mars.
Um, I I'm, I'm not a teacher. Um, but it did make me think of uh when I was a student and my parents um, or by the time I was uh in high school here um and and eighth grade. You know, my mom didn't have time to look at those scores. I looked at it myself and I never knew what they they under what it meant. I think I just saw my number just above the average line. That's all I saw. And I think I was like, oh, I think I did good. Is that what that means? And I remember my peers in the classroom just looking at it going like, oh, where did we're, oh. I was but like, nobody, we didn't, it was like we were on our own. But um, just what I mean by saying that there's just so much more context of what happens in in our students' lives, that that's not what defines them, right? And that's not what's going to be forever stuck with them. And that shouldn't be that way. And I like how you phrase it, like this is a tool. Um, it's one of the ways of of the indicators that we have, but there's so much more uh that we have to take into consideration when we look at these test scores. There's so much more that happens. And so I don't, you know, I don't get laser focused on this. It's, it's, it's not. I don't, you know, I don't get laser focused on this. It's, it's, it's not, um, because if. I was defined by that test score, I wouldn't be where I am today. And that's not what it's about. I think what's more about that's that, that day of the professional day. Where you have, um. A space for our, 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 our team, our staff from the shout outs in the. Gym room to our bus drivers and our, uh, counselors to our nurses, to our teachers, to our principals, to our admin, to everybody. Um, and what kind of tone are we putting out there in the culture of our NVUSD? And in the presentation today and a lot of what, what happens when we go to our site visits. Um, it's words like we're learning and it's, you know, we're implementing and, um. Supporting and alignment and it's just so much work. And it doesn't happen overnight and it's gonna always continue because things are going to evolve and things, challenges are going to come up from an. You know, an iPhone to, um, a, 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 a pandemic, you know, so. Uh, there's so much, but I think, um, I just appreciate the continuity and, and I think. This is the first time in, well, not the first time, but just kind of seeing now in the sixth year of my term. Of being aboard just much more clarity and it just gets better and better and despite the challenges. We're still, um, I think, putting up a good way of, of us. Um, giving it our all for our students and our, in our families. And, um, and I think that, you know, that's. Um, that's where we're, we're, we're at. And I think I'm more mostly proud of just. The culture that we have been able to set up within our professional day. I think that's what's stuck in my mind is just being at the gym. Um, and seeing everybody and, and, um, promoting that concept of cariño. Um, and I think those are other, the other aspects of our work that. Doesn't get highlighted here that it's important to mention because we get stuck in the numbers and the percentages. And that's not, that's not all of it. So. Um, thank you for all putting the numbers together and all of that and trying to, um. Uh, explain it in a way that our community can understand and, um, and, and even for us to have a, a, a conversation about it here. Um, so just, um, just, we'll just all keep up the good work. It's what we can do and we know. All of us deep down, whenever I have conversations with many of you, it's because we know that's what our students and our staff deserves and we believe that.
Trustee Chu?
So I also echo that this is really just a snapshot, um, of our students. It's not the whole picture. They're whole people, right? Um, but I wanted to speak, um, from a parent perspective. Because as parents, we see these test scores for our children. When, and I, I mentioned this actually at our curriculum meeting and I'm going to direct this question to Dr. Booth. Uh, so my fifth grader, um, took the STAR test, I think around the same time that he took the CASP test last spring. And his STAR test said he was exceeded in reading, but then his CASP test came back as just met. So I know the answer, but I think it, it's useful for, for us to hear from you. Why do we see this type of difference and to kind of. Not, not, you know, to, and I know that we do see a good correlation between the two tests. But I think it's, it's useful to understand that in context.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that question. So when students take the STAR test, they are, um, given a, uh. They're given a performance level based on two different benchmarks. So one is the national benchmark that norms the students to the rest of the country. And that's the one that you saw today. So that's the one that goes, um, yeah, that's the, most of the data you saw today is, is that national benchmark. And that's especially helpful for a teacher in the classroom. It helps with the grouping. It helps with understanding who might need a, a little bit more support here versus here. Um, uh, so it's, it's good for that day to day work that a teacher does. Um, the other benchmark is the state benchmark and that's the one that's aligned to the very rigorous California standards. And that's the one that predicts performance on a CASP. And so when you saw that slide where I compared, uh, spring CASP, CASP to spring star. We were looking at that state benchmark and that's where, where we really see that alignment. So when we're looking to predict performance on a summative test. That's the benchmark we'll want to use. And so, um, teachers, administrators will use, um, either of the two benchmarks, just depending on the purpose that they're, that they're, that they need the data for.
Thank you.
All right, uh, trustee Gomez?
Yeah, I think, uh, concerning the STAR test results, um. It would be a mistake to put too much stock into those scores. Because it is one test on one class period, one day. And it's an extremely small sample size in both the math and the reading. And I know with my sister, um, she did pretty well in the reading. During one STAR test and then later in the year she took it again and she took a massive dip down. And then the next year when they took it at the beginning of the year, she was back up to where she was. So I think that we need to keep that in mind, especially on an individual level.
I have a couple of questions and comments. Um, I noticed that in our data. In math, particularly in the kindergarten area, we started pretty high at sixty five percent and then. First through fifth dropped ten percentage points and it was kind of consistent at the round of fifty five percent. Through those grades. Do you have an idea of why we might see that ten percent drop from K to, to one?
Yes, thank you for the question. So the, 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 what students are asked to do on, on that math, STAR math assessment in kindergarten and first grade is very different. From what they're asked to do in second through fifth grade. So the rigor of the assessment increases. Um, at their early grades, really the foundational skills are just around number recognition, understanding. One-to-one correspondence, which means that they know that if there are five blocks in front of them, that that represents the number five. So that doesn't require. It doesn't have nearly the cognitive demand as the, the higher order thinking skills that are required on the, on the. Uh, as the students progress through the grade levels. So that's how I would explain why there's, why there's that dip. We don't want to see the dip. We want to see students. Um, learning the foundational skills, engaging in the inquiry-based process. That we, that we're teaching them through number corners, through our programs, so that that, that dip doesn't occur, but the rigor. The demands, the expectations do increase significantly as they move up into those, um, grade levels.
Okay. And then I also saw in math that at six, seven and eight, each year there was a decline. Um, I was wondering if we had an explanation for that phenomenon as well.
So in sixth, seventh and eighth grade, we're seeing students who are, um, moving up in rigor through that. And we're also seeing that, um, the students, as they move up, one of, one of the areas that we have yet to focus on is really those instructional practices. Um, of, as we've put into place last year is really looking consistently across our, across our. Sixth through twelfth grade is, are we being consistent with the priorities that we're teaching? Which align to, um, those standards that are on our CASP test as well as our reading test. As well as our STAR math test. And so with that, as we move into this year and start to look at those instructional practices. And see as we move through those, we spent a lot of time focusing on the fifth to sixth grade transition last year. And so as we see that, that improvement in sixth grade. Um, now looking at that more than just the fifth to sixth grade tr- transition, but looking at beyond that. Trying to see if we focus on those instructional practices, if we can improve those scores as they move up through middle school. And, um, keeps us consistent. I also want to recognize that some of our students in middle school and I, as we speak to the hu-. The humanizing part of this, that some of our students in middle school have experienced quite a bit of transition. And so, um, supporting their social emotional learning at the start of this year and that transition and is, has been part of that. And so hopefully, once we get through that, then we can focus more on those instructional practices in math.
I wanted to highlight and appreciate the breakdown of the slow growth folks. That's something I had previously asked for. Um, and it was pretty interesting to see that data, especially. Um, to find out that forty percent of the slow growth in literacy was actually at or above benchmark, which. You know, indicates that some of our higher achieving students, um. Aren't moving forward as quickly, but that could be because they're already very high on the scale. So that was. That was interesting to see. And then, um, I really liked the, uh, typical or high growth. Um, at sixty percent, uh, for our urgent intervention students, that was, uh, an impressive. Um, number to, to recognize. So, um, hopefully this can continue to be part of this report in the future. One of the things I wanted to inquire about is I understand that this is, uh, our baseline data for this year. Um, but would it make sense since we now have been using STAR for multiple years to compare baseline datas? Across years, uh, to see what that looks like.
Thank you for that question, um, trustee Gracia. Uh, we, we definitely could compare the data points. I think there, I think we'd stop to be very careful when we do something like that. Given the, the varying context that we've seen over the last few years. Um, so I would be, uh, I could certainly do that, but I would be very hesitant to place a lot of interpretation. On a comparison across, um, years at this point.
And just one comment, there's always that cohort moving piece, right? So. You have to remember, you're not, you're comparing different kids, different cohorts of kids.
Right, exactly.
Um, I think it's still something I'd like to see in the future, uh, when we do this for the first time next year.
You're asking for a fall to fall comparison?
Yes.
Okay, I will make note of that.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Is it, uh, fall to fall cohort data? So like looking at third grade this current year. Um, so next year we would look at the fourth grade and compare third grade to fourth grade. Cause that's if you're looking at cohort data or are you looking at how our third graders this year did compared to how our third graders did, uh, next year?
I think both of those would be interesting to look at. Um, but my initial request was the second one you described. Um, but both of those could be interesting to, uh, review.
Thank you.
Um, and I think that takes care of the remainder of, uh, those items. And so we will now take a five-minute break and we will be back in about five minutes. Okay, and we are back. We will now move on to item J two A instructional services. Introduction of core instructional material adoption for high school.
Thank you, Vice President Gracia. So the instructional items being presented tonight are for oceanography. And oceanography is a course at two of our high schools currently. It is a core instructional materials for a course that is focused in physical and life science standards. It is a course that could be, students could take as a part of the U C A to G requirements. The course content focuses on issues concerning the marine environment. The curriculum this evening would provide an updated version for oceanography. Currently, they're using online curriculum and this will give them core curriculum, which is aligned with our board priority number two. It does focus on aspects of climate change, particular to disruption of the ocean environment. And human activities associated with that. Our curriculum council through our process has reviewed these materials presented by two teachers. At Vinage in American Canyon High School and is moving them forward as a recommendation to be reviewed by the board at the next meeting.
All right, before we ask the trustees, we will check to see if there is any public comment on this item. Ms. Green, is there any public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Do I have any comments or questions from trustees?
I guess I just have a quick comment, which is that my hope is that we will be able to offer this course at all of our high schools. I have a a concern about inequity of access when we have. Sort of what seems to me to be a pretty high level, high interest science class that's not available at Napa High to our students there. So that's my comment. I hope that we can broaden the availability.
I appreciate that and I'll I'll work with Napa High School. One of the nuances at Napa High is they do have more sections of environmental science. And so, but we can, we can look into seeing about putting this on the course card. It hasn't yet been put on the course card. But that is because we, they have taken more of a focus on the environmental component as opposed to the oceanography. But I will make note of that.
But it does seem to me that if a student was interested in the environmental science, that oceanography would would be also something that would be of high interest. So I I I see what you're saying, but I hope that we can still add it in, even if it may, if it might mean taking a few sections of the environmental science.
Oh, great, thank you. I'll I'll make note of that and reach out to Napa.
Anyone else? Okay, I did have one thing. I was just wanted to say that I was glad to see that we were replacing a sort of cobbled together online instructional materials. With an actual book and coherent course offering. So I am pleased to see that as progress.
Thank you.
And I think with that, we can move on to professional learning day presentation.
Uh, thank you, Vice President Gracia. I'm excited to present about our professional learning day that occurred on October fourteenth. So good evening again, Vice President Gracia, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti. Student Representative Gomez and the N V S D community a little over a month ago.
Pardon me, if I could, I would just like to invite you to come up to the podium for your report.
Sorry, good. Good evening again, Vice President Gracia, Board Trustee, Board Trustees, Dr. Masetti. I'm our Student Representative Gomez and the N V S D community. Oh, a little over a month ago, our district gathered at American Canyon High School to engage in a district wide professional learning day. Tonight, we'll provide an overview of that invigorating day. Ms. Green, can you put up the slides, please? Thank you, you can see the lovely picture that was taken while we were in the gym at American Canyon High School, listening to Dr. Victoria. So next slide, please. Our professional learning day focused on our L cap goals as well as our annual board priorities and our diversity, equity and inclusion plan. This day is one of two district wide professional learning days specifically focused on district initiatives. Professional learning has been a challenge this year due to the lack of substitute teachers to release teachers to attend learning opportunities during their workday. So these days are critical in developing our staff. Next slide, please. Our professional growth this year, our professional growth this year is focused and aligned with the goals that were shared on the previous slide. And it falls into these categories. One is building a caring community with high expectations. The other one is utilizing data driven decision making. And then the last one is providing effective tier one instruction. And all of the professional learning that was done on that day falls into one of these three categories. And I love all the pictures from that day, so there's a lot of joy. Next slide, please. This slide has an example of the program for that day. Our theme was bringing the moss bloom, which encompasses the theories of Maslow and Bloom's taxonomy. The concept is that we need to meet the social emotional needs of students to provide them with high levels of support so that they can meet rigorous academic expectations. Quite a bit of planning goes into making sure that the participants have an enjoyable experience and providing a program and a catered lunch and even swag. Helped to create a very positive experience. We also even like take the extra step to make sure there's even a private space for nursing moms as well. So we really do try to think about the needs of the participants that day and and provide a day that they feel like supported. And and as we were talking about our ecosystem of Corinio that they feel, you know, loved and cared for as well. Next slide, please. For, oh, next, oh, there, I think for this day, we selected experts in the fields that we are working to improve in. So Dr. Victorios and Love Jefferson launched the day with a keynote address focused on the power of educators and that we are all educators. They made sure to include our classified staff, instructional staff, bus drivers. And apparently as long as we're all included in that kickoff in the morning. Are also, are also our staff worked with on that day, some national experts like Michael McDowell on learning sprints. And really looking at high quality instruction and and as well as Tammy Heffelbauer, who's focused on priority standards. And identifying really clear learning goals for students. Next slide, please. One new focus for this day was intentionally planning learning for our classified staff. Our classified staff, bus drivers, office staff, campus supervisors, instructional aides, our childcare staff and parent liaisons. Spent the day in sessions specifically planned for them. The sessions range from the power of educators, which I talked about before, to suicide prevention, to Aries. And to escape, which is the financial software we use. I will now pass to Director Monica Ready, who will go and share about the certificate experience. Next slide, please.
So the certificated experience allowed for our staff to experience a continuity of learning. They could dive deeper into addressing some of the board priorities that you heard about earlier this evening. First, site leaders and staff started their day with the ecosystem of Corinio. Those book ended their day as staff participated in modules that allowed them to engage with each other. They could reflect and connect and learn about how to build those places and spaces amongst each other. As well as with our students when they returned to classrooms and it was a nice alignment with our classified staff. As we focus on board parity number two and support our multilingual learners, staff attended sessions focused on high quality interactions. All elementary teachers engaged in at least one of those sessions focused on high quality interactions. Secondary staff had the opportunity to select between sessions that were focused on high quality interactions as well as core curricular adoptions. Vertical alignment of priority standards and instructional practices. Or learn learn new strategies that support them with engaging in mathematics or in a reading. Additionally, staff learning about, learned about supporting our students who have A E Ps. And students who need support in the general education environment through modifications and accommodations. For specialized staff, we designed sessions tailored to meet their specific professional learning needs. And you see a few examples of those listed there specifically around our physical education, our musical and visual arts, as well as our our support for mental health. Another board priority, board priority number four. Next slide, please. So all elementary teachers, as we dive a little bit deeper into board party number two, focused on that high quality tier one instruction. All of our elementary principals supported their staff with data cycles. And so our, I have to give a shout out to our elementary principals for leading that day. These data cycles, as you've heard this evening, are called learning sprints. Our staff built their first learning sprint focused on math. And at the secondary level, all English and math teachers worked with experts in the field. Dr. Michael McDowell and a Dr. Tammy Heffelbauer to learn how to build those short sprints. And our math folks who learned and really aligned those priority standards and proficiency skills last year, then learned strategies for how to actually use those in the classroom. To build clarity and provide feedback. And so we're interested to see as they close out those friends in December, how that continuity of professional learning, not just one day, but building throughout the year really helps improve their practice. Our focus on building strong teacher teams to engage in data cycles was strengthened through this. And so we appreciate the time, knowing the shortage that we have to really dive deeper into that day. And look to see how those results are are playing out for us as they meet weekly on Wednesdays through their professional learning communities. Next slide, please. So we had a significant turnout, as was shared earlier this evening, just incredible turnout and nice to see in our gym. We had a thousand sixty five attendees, our highest number of participants ever for a professional learning event in N V S D. I'd be remiss not to thank Director Knox, our Director of Prevention and Intervention, who was supposed to present this evening's under the weather. And this wouldn't happen without her, those attendings would not be able to enroll without her and Director Booth, so shout out to them. We had fifty percent increase in our classified staff attendance at this professional learning day. Which is an increase from March and we look forward to continuing to including our amazing classified staff. It was wonderful to have our entire N V S D community there in the in the room. And as you heard, hearing some of the the different places and spaces that they work and see of our students to get them to be able to learn every single day. Takes our, takes our whole team. So you see some pictures there, you can see how full the gym is and it was full of lots of our N V S D folks. Next slide, please. So overall, the professional learning session feedback demonstrated staff were satisfied with the professional learning experience. We had three point six out of four stars. And so we're thrilled to see that you can see some of our staff dressed up in their school gear, proud to be there. And so as we look at some of the feedback on the next slide, please, we can dive a little bit deeper into what our staff had to share. So the rating for PD day overall was a three point two. Some highlights to note from our staff, some key trends that came about in that feedback were the opportunity to be together in person. And it was energizing to fill the gym with our N V S D community and also learn across our departments and across our schools. We heard from many of our staff that being together and hearing what what staff are doing at other school sites is an opportunity that they don't get to have regularly. The inclusion of the classified staff in the overall learning and engaging and really building a comprehensive and cohesive system. As well as just building that ecosystem of Corinio with all of our staff together in one place. And then providing experts in the field of mental health and instruction and culturally responsive teaching and learning. And we know that that happens beyond the classroom as well with our classified staff who support our students in those daily interactions. The October PD date allowed us to launch learning with coherence. And as we look to March, we will definitely, one of the pieces of feedback is balancing voice and choice. For folks who would like to attend certain sessions. And so we look to supporting that within our key priorities, but giving some more voice and choice in those particular areas. Next slide, please. It's the theme of the evening. So we are grateful to the American Canyon community for being wonderful hosts and who includes our, we had American Canyon High School leaders who helped us throughout the day. From opening up and setting up to guiding folks around the campus. And a highlight of the day was our student musicians at lunch. And they, thanks to our American Canyon Middle School choir students. And Director Alan Yuren, who is new to A C M S to call and ask for him to present just a short. Short six to eight weeks into the school year and have his choir students ready was pretty phenomenal. And our American Canyon High School Jazz Band and Director Brendan Day for their lunchtime entertainment was greatly appreciated. So with that, I will turn it back over to Assistant Superintendent.
Uh, next slide, please. Thank you, Director Eddie. Teamwork really does make the dream work. This day took quite a bit of preparation and planning. And I want to just take a moment to thank our, the support staff in the instructional division. They did everything from arriving the day before to help set up and get materials to classrooms. They also helped put together little appreciation bags for this classroom teachers that whose rooms we used. So we left the teachers with a little, little thank you and appreciation gift. Because we know that having people come into your space and it's like your second home that we knew, we know that they would really appreciate a little, uh, thank you and appreciation gift. I also want to thank, we also utilized American Canyon High School's leadership team, uh, student leaders. And they came and helped and worked the day before and as well as the day of to make sure that things ran smoothly. They helped set up lunches, they helped get equipped materials back and forth to classroom spaces. So we really appreciate their help as well. And I mentioned the instructional support, support staff, they did a phenomenal job. And then also, of course, the entire instructional division, the TOSA team, everyone who contributed to make that day a really a big success. Next slide, please. Um, here's a brief video that's taken at lunch to give you a small glimpse of the excitement of the day. And Ashley, let's see if it. And you'll get to hear the American Canyon High School.
Uh, I'll get it. Yeah, I'll get it.
Thank you, that just to give you a little taste of what the energy level was like there. And you can see all the smiles on the faces and people connecting and as we work this year. And as we work this year to build that and increase that ecosystem of Crania, it does apply to our staff as well. And just having an opportunity to come together and build community is super important. Next slide, please. You know, we're always engaged in the process of continuous improvement. And as Director Eddie mentioned earlier, that some of the feedback we received, we really do take to heart. And as we can make a start the planning, which we've already started for the March date. And we're taking these items into consideration. You'll notice the one at the bottom, more coffee. Apparently there was a need for coffee in the afternoon. We're not going to take that personally, like that we needed coffee in the afternoon. But this gives you some idea of some of the the things that staff gave. And as Dr. Director Ready mentioned earlier, more voice and choice around sessions. Because we have to really strongly leverage these days because of the lack of ability to offer professional learning during the school day. We had to limit some of the voice and choice. And so we're looking to see how we can provide a little bit more voice and twice in the March date, but still maximize that time together. So with that, all of this planning will go into consideration for the March, March date, and we'll just be bringing the mosque bloom 2.0. So thank you so much. Questions or comments?
Before we go to trustee questions or comments, I'll ask to see if we have any public comment. Ms. Green, is anyone wanting to make public comment?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you, trustees. Trustee Chu.
So I had an opportunity to sit in on the first session with Dr. Victor Rios and a few of our classified employees. And I'll say that it was, it was a really eye opening experience. Because I was in a room with bus drivers and cafeteria workers. And they were just sharing their raw experience of their life. And they were able to turn it into something positive for the students. Bus drivers were welcoming the students on board and it was just amazing. That they they were in this space that you wouldn't necessarily think that it's a traditional, you know, place where you would provide support for children. But they are, right? These bus drivers, for example, are the first ones that many of the students meet of our employees. And love, 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 love Jefferson. Are one of the guest speakers, because he was, well, aside from being a well known football, former football NFL player. He was also a bus driver after he retired from football. And he exactly exemplified what it was I was hearing in that room. So it was, it was amazing. I really appreciated the fact that we are bringing the classified staff into professional development. Because they bring such richness, right, into our students' lives. So really appreciative of that. Just wanted to share that with the other trustees who were unable to stay.
Any other trustees interested in comment or?
Just congratulations. It was just, you could feel the energy. It was just felt like so much fun. And the welcoming, you know, cha-chis that you get with like, I saw like, I got my sticker. I was like, where am I going to put it? And so, I mean, it was just congratulations. It was, you could see the love and care in, but it just a tremendous amount of work for every detail. So just well done.
Trustee Water.
I agree. It was great. And very charismatic speakers who were sincere, not hackneyed. I mean, I know they do these workshops, but they made it sound new and people liked them a lot. They were, I thought I was knocked out because come on, it's the end of the week. People are tired and I walked in and it was just loads of people there, loads of people. That was good.
All right, I do have a comment and a question. So you said that we had a 50% increase in classified staff in attendance, which is awesome. Really glad to hear. I did hear from a couple of classified staff that didn't attend, that they didn't feel like there was really something for them. Hopefully, we can continue to focus on bringing them in and and drive that number up further. But 50% increases tremendous.
Well, thank you. I, yes, I think the increase is pretty remarkable. And I do know that we've prioritized instructional staff for this professional learning day. So I know there might be some staff that maybe don't directly spend time with students. So we prioritize the staff that did for this particular day.
Well, I heard people say they didn't go. And when they heard about it, they were sorry they didn't go. And three teachers told me that, so.
That's great to hear.
And then, of course, I have the probably most important question. What was the swag that we were giving away?
Well, trust trustee Gonzalez Mars showed the the sticker. There's a mosque bloom sticker. They also, I have a, I'll show you the journal. They got a journal and they got a folder that had the program in it as well. So it's a lot of people to buy swag for, so we're just trying to be fiscally responsible.
Yep, but a little bit of swag can just make it a little extra fun.
And it was a supply for the day.
Yes, it was a useful tool for the day. So they had a little journal. They're actually really cute. I'll show show you one.
Yeah, the agenda was in there. I mean, it's just like any conference that you go to or anything, right? You want to feel organized or prepared. Yeah.
We do have some extras, but this is what it looks like. So it's very, it's very lovely. And then there was a lovely folder that everything fit into. It's really kind of a nice little package. So, okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I think then we can move on to action items. K1 Business Services, K1A reimbursement agreement with City of American Canyon.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Water. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item 2A, Human Resources, Local Assignment Options for Teacher Assignments 2022-2023.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 3, Instructional Services, 3A, Contract Addendum Between NVUSD and Rachel Cone Obert for NVAE Small Scale Farming Instruction 22 through 23.
Move to approve, second.
All right, that's a first by trustee Chu and a second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, thank you. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Moving on to B, Amendment to Agreement Between Napa Valley Unified School District and Strategic Consultation for Schools LLC.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, no public comment. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item C, Napa Valley Adult Education Course of Study Adoption for Introduction to Machine Tool Technology.
Move to approve, second.
Move by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item D, Napa Valley Adult Education Course of Study Adoption for Introduction to Childcare.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, Certification of Comprehensive School Safety Plans for All Napa Unified District Schools.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Thank you. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item 4, Operational Services, 4A, FMO 13.01.2022. Pramac Trees and Associates LLC.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item B, Resolution 23-15, Transportation Department Participation in Lower Emission School Bus Program.
Move to approve, but I have a comment, second.
All right, we have a first by trustee Chu and a second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Trustee Chu.
So I just want to say I'm very grateful that our school district is moving in this route. I know that the students of Schools for Climate Action has been really wanting to make sure we're making some headway in our resolution, our climate change resolution. And I know that, and I've, I've actually sent this to them and they're, they're very happy that we're pursuing this route for our future bus needs and, you know, trying to make it so that our future has a place to live with clean air. So thank you.
Trustee Riser.
Oh, I just agree with trustee Chu's comment. Thank you.
All right, in that case, Ms. Pressy, can we have a roll call vote on this?
Yes, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
Trustee Gracia.
Aye.
Trustee Water.
Aye.
Trustee Riser.
Aye.
Trustee Gonzalez Morris.
Aye.
Trustee Chu.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Number 4C is Request to Surplus Totem Poles at American Canyon Middle School.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right. Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. Item D, Facility Use Agreement Between Teacher Resource Center of the North Bay and Napa Valley Unified School District.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item E, FMO 14.01.2022. Carpet One Safety and Security Blind Installation.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we're on to K5, School Planning and Construction. K5A, SPC number 13, no, number 3.1-23. Request to Call for Qualifications for Program and Construction Management Services for Facility Projects.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 5B, SPC number 1.5-23. Request for Consulting Services with Trevor Minx.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 5C, SPC number 21.48-17. Request to Award Lease Lease Backed Services to Arnz Builders for the Vintage High School Farm Project.
Move to approve, second.
First by trustee Chu, second by trustee Riser. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
Student Board Member Gomez.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. All right, informational item. Item 1, General Services, 1A, Curriculum and Student Support Committee. I believe that's attached. Item B, Facilities and Technology. Item C, Finance Committee. Item D, Policy Committee. Onto item 2, Business Services. Item A, Enrollment Report. Any public comment, Ms. Green, on the enrollment report?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, moving on, item B, the pupil attendance rates. Ms. Green, is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
And item C, the Quarterly Investment Report, September 30th, 2022. Is there any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
My only comment here is sort of in honor of trustee Jankowicz, who can't be here tonight. And that this continues to be a disappointing return on our investment because it is very small. Having said that, we will move on to item 3, Human Resources. A Quarterly Report on New Williams Uniform Complaints for Period Ending October 31st, 2022. Ms. Green, do we have any public comment on this item?
There is no public comment on this item.
All right, no comments from trustees. We'll move on to item M, Additional Suggestions and Comments from Board Members and Superintendent.
I want to say something. So I just want to let everyone know that I'm super excited about our school board and team. Going down to the California School Boards Association Annual Education Conference at the first week of December. And I'm excited when we get back the opportunity to report out how our team did in terms of workshops that we're presenting at. NVUSD has been asked to present three times, so we're going to be busy down there. I'll be joining the California School Board Association Consultants who invited me to present on our process for superintendent superintendent performance evaluation. And and its connection to the board priorities. I'll also be presenting with CSBA Governance Consultants on governing in a time of chaos and how how to manage that. We've definitely had our experience with that. And then I'm super excited about our team. Assistant Superintendent Rob Mangwala, Assistant Superintendent Dana Page. Our Vice President, who will be shifting into President, trustee Gracia. And the President of NVEA, Gail Young, will be joining us. And they have been invited to present on our staffing formulas and compensation formula as a strategy to maintaining financial stabilization while districts are experiencing declining enrollment. So given that all of California is experiencing declining enrollment, maybe we'll have standing room only there. But I'm very excited about that. And so I look back to kind of reporting out how those workshops went. That'd be great to be with board members up and across the state, up and down.
That'd be great to be with board members up and across the state, up and down the state. So, and superintendents up and down the state.
Should be fun.
And all be pleased with Thanksgiving dinner.
Yes. That will happen first.
Yeah.
That's right.
So we'll just wish everyone then out there a happy Thanksgiving and move on to item N, Future Agenda Items. Seeing none, I will now move to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Getting adjourned.